Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Village of Washingtonville Work Session Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 6th. If you did not get an agenda, they're on the table to your right as you enter the door. We urge all residents of the Village of Washingtonville to contact the village hall with any questions that you have with regards to the village. We are currently in a water restriction. We are asking that you do not water the lawns, driveway, or use water. Please use a watering can when watering flowers and plants. We don't want you to top off the pools. Even though it rained for the past two days, I don't know how that's going to help right away. I think it takes a while for it to reach our wells, but as soon as the restriction is lifted, you're getting a hall call. Okay, if you're on the current list, you see that. Ahern Boulevard is still closed. Village Board wants Ahern Boulevard widened. Looking at the situation now, this is not a good one. I believe it's more narrow than it was before they started the project. So we've been in contact with the state. It's a town project. It's not a village project. It's a town project. They're along with the state, and there's some issues that came up. One being the sign is now lower than it should be. They wanted to raise the roadway two feet. It had been raised five feet, which is, our sign is buried. And there's a problem with water collection on the side of the road between the roadway and the stone wall. Again, it's not a village project, but it's affecting the village tremendously. We will be sending our letters to the residents of the village, making the residents aware of what some of the controversial issues are in development of our village. While some of us have advantage of seeing what's in front of them, I have the job of seeing over the entire village what is meant by that. We have roads to be paved, the upkeep parks, contracts, taxes, et cetera. We as residents cannot believe for one minute that all of this should be accomplished on the backs of the existing tax papers. Please keep in mind that it's the village board. I'll speak for the other boards. We hear everything that's being asked and what's being said. Perhaps one day the residents of the village and us could all sit down and discuss our future. To date, we have had foils of well over 180. Takes time to produce, we'll get the answers for the foils. It goes, it starts here, then it goes out to our attorney. It's costing us a lot of money. It's costing us a lot of time, sometimes just conversation. And I'm not saying you're not entitled to it. I think we all want to have that in front of us. But have over 180 for the past month, I believe, is kind of excessive. That being said, if you have any, you want to foil it, please feel free to foil. Any questions? I want to just skip around here on the agenda. The agenda's on the table. We'll do the appointment of part-time treasurer, Leslie Tillison. We will be hiring Leslie as our part-time treasurer for the village. She comes to us with experience in village treasury as well as auditing experience. Salary would be $40,000 for the year. She will be preparing the future budgets, handling any of the information that the state of New York has required, get everyone back on track. We look forward to having a great relationship with her. Thank you so much for answering that email. It means a lot. Let's see. We could go to...
We have the...
Is it...
We have, yes. I didn't get there yet. Okay. So motion to hire Leslie Tillison at the salary I mentioned, $40,000. Need a motion?
Effective tomorrow, 9/7.
Effective tomorrow...
A motion.
9/7. Is that tomorrow, right?
Yes, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Second.
Deputy May Waddow will be the motion, second by trustee Kolar. Roll call, trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Deputy May Waddow?
Yes.
And then, yes. Starting tomorrow, 9/7. Great, thank you. Let's go with C, letter C, presentation of security.
Can I plug you out there?
Sure. You did say you wanted, you were supposed to remind me.
Yeah. And, uh... The remote, do you know?
Right here, if you'd prefer.
Oh, sorry. I don't know if you want to hand these out just to get people...
Sure.
Do you mind if I put that over?
You're going to clear a little room if you have it?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
While we're waiting for that to be set up, we could go to letter D, 3D. Before we move on, where we need a bigger venue for the projects that are very controversial right now. We are looking into scheduling at the high school or middle school, probably the middle school. But I still think it's important that we have our regular scheduled meetings here. So let's say on the 20th of September is a regular meeting here. We'll look to schedule maybe the 22nd at the high school or middle school auditorium.
For village board or planning board?
For both, for village board and planning board, and zoning board when that time comes. I just think it's best for all of us to have more space. They could look at whatever has to be looked at on the screen. Just think it's best for us. But we still need to maintain our identity in this program.
So... Is that going to be in addition to it?
It would be in addition to it, yes. So scheduled meeting for September 20th is still on. And as soon as we hear back from the schools.
So I'm a little confused. So the 22nd would be another village board...
I just said the 22nd, could be the 23rd.
Would it be another village board meeting?
Village board meeting if we wanted to discuss 23 or 32 South Street.
Okay, or it could be a PBA meeting.
The planning board meeting to discuss.
So we don't know what meeting it's going to be?
We don't know what meeting it's going to be, but we'll get everyone out. It'll be posted on the website, and we'll do a hall call. For those, for the planning board and...
Oh, you will do at the hall?
Yes, we will. Yeah, we should do it.
I received a facility form from Kiwanis Club of Washingtonville to hold a fundraiser for their Moms and Pumpkins. They would like to host this on Sunday, September 25th, from 9:00 to 3:00, after the minutes block across from Orange County Bagels.
Is it the 27th?
Yep, and there's nothing on our calendar and nothing there, so...
They've been doing this for the past five years, I think.
Yeah, I have six years.
The chip, it's her computer talking to it.
I think you turned it off. It was regular.
Need a motion for this?
Yes.
Make a motion. Trustee Kolar, second. Roll call, trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Deputy May Waddow?
Yes.
Okay, public assembly committee?
Yeah.
For the Girl Scouts, it's on.
It's on, yeah.
Do we get anything from them?
Yes, um, can we do that really quick? Girl Scout Troop 294 submitted a form, a facility form request to do the end-of-year bridging ceremony at Burn Allen Park on Saturday, October 1st, with a rain date of Sunday, October 2nd, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. And there's nothing.
Nothing scheduled for those days?
Correct, nothing on those dates.
Make a motion approved?
Trustee Kolar, make a motion, second?
Second.
Trustee Kolar, roll call, trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Deputy May Waddow?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
I've received insurance forms for both organizations.
In your packet, there's a facility use request form, Pat Ryan for Congress. They want to do congressional ad for the U.S. Congress this coming Thursday at Burn Allen Park from 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Pat Ryan, right now, does not represent the Village of Washingtonville. However, if successful, he'll be down in Washington, and he will be representing the Village of Washingtonville. So in here, we have certificate of liability insurance. Person who's going to be recording or making the ad is Robert Cordey. He's a resident of the village.
Who mentees his house?
Well, he's, he moved to New Orleans. His kids grew up here.
So they just want to use the film commercial?
Yep. Make a motion?
Make a motion.
Deputy May Waddow, second?
A second.
Roll call, trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Can I, is that, what are they, so it's just going to be like photography, movie, whatever?
It's going to be a video, I believe.
That's, okay. All right, so it's not going to be trucks and...
I think whatever trucks they need for the lighting.
Okay, just small, not, okay. Not like a movie, like, you know.
Not like the Irishman?
Yeah.
Four trailer trailers and 10 RVs and... Some of that movie was supposed to be filmed here, the village. I don't know if you know that. Trustee Kolar?
Yes.
Deputy May Waddow?
Yes.
I did know I would give my, I gave my portrait, my face shot, to Al Machino. I figured he gave his out, I figured I'd give mine out, and they gave me a thumbs up. What he did with it, I don't know. I don't know. I signed it to Al Always Be Best. So it's really personalized. You can't do anything with it. And...
I think she did it correctly. It would be the last one.
Updated village hall progression. I still have not heard back from them. I will be meeting with a planner next Tuesday up in Saratoga. Come back to me today.
You went to my last month for another race.
I did go to the races, and I didn't meet with them. I lost $3. Don't bring it up, okay? I lost $3. I think this weekend was the last weekend, right? What's the race that they have to beat one? It's with a T, I think, Travis. Yes. It's nicer. It's nicer, old school. Yes, too bad it's still in the state of New York.
You're based on war?
Was I?
You're based on war?
Saratoga.
Okay, gang, apologies for the technical challenges. If, it's okay, I'll come down, I'll show my laptop, and anybody in the audience that wants to take a picture, welcome to. For those of you who I don't know, thank you for the opportunity to be here. For those of you who I don't know, I'm Andrea Connington. I'm a resident of Washingtonville. I live on Lark Street. And probably about two months ago, I reached out to Mayor Bucko because I saw the Facebook post about the vandalism at Burn Allen Park. So, and that aligns directly with what I do for a living, living. I've been in technology for about 25 years, and currently I'm with an organization that delivers artificial intelligence over video streams. So it's AIOT over computer vision. It sounds all fancy and everything, but it's really simple. All it is, is taking videos. So anywhere you see a video camera, typically what happens is that video is ingested and it goes to a VMS, which is a video management system. So then when anything happens, something happens, and the next day you have to go back and look at that video, find the time, the place, and who might have done it. What our organization does is provide real-time alerts. So as a video is being, you know, taken in, it would have artificial intelligence applied to that, not at the camera level, but in the software level, and then be able to provide proactive alerts. So that's at a high level what we do. We also provide IoT, which is Internet of Things, which are sensors that could be like monitoring water levels, monitoring doors open and closing, monitoring gates open and closing, things of that nature. So that led to a discussion with the mayor and the chief about what we could potentially do for the village. I put together a brief presentation after some analysis specifically of Memorial Park and Burn Allen Park. So what I want to do is not, for everybody, I'll just give you a real high-level overview to understand the technology it needed, and then jump right into what our recommendations are for the parks, and then kind of evaluate what my recommendation is versus what's realistic for the village to be able to do at this point in time. So, here, I'll share my, I don't have to share it with you guys as well, but this visual, I'm a visual person. So what this exemplifies is on the left-hand side.
What if we went up there and we said on this side?
We can do that as you can see the screen.
No, I'm saying what if you put it up there so they can see, so we can sit up this side?
So the left-hand side, it shows the benders and...
Come on, Joe, get on it.
And the video. So for purposes of our conversation, is that decent?
Yeah.
Can't say that's...
It's too far.
Yeah.
That's okay.
For purposes of this conversation, what I want you to keep in mind is when you're talking about data collection, video content is data collection. So as we, and we'll use the example for the park, because that's specifically what we're focused on today, is the data that's being collected. So if there's a camera in the park, it's, the camera itself is looking for specific data. If the camera is going to be programmed to be looking for whatever it's programmed to look for, is it people at night? Is it loitering at certain points of the day? Is it, you know, frequent activity? When there typically isn't frequent activity, that's ingested. And what we do that's different than typical installations is we do not require fiber connection. We can go over cellular. So this could be in remote locations. We can have it over a power supply or solar. And then ultimately, my organization does not sell, we sell the cameras, we sell the hardware. We do not manufacture the hardware. We're manufacturing. What we provide is that software. So it's that layer of being able to identify what it is, whatever it is that we're looking for, and then in turn, being able to provide those alerts to alert whomever it is that be responsible for, hey, somebody's in the park and they shouldn't be, or somebody's breaking into a bathroom and it's supposed to be locked, and then being able to provide an immediate alert on that. And then in the outcome, as well as there's a dashboard that you can monitor levels of people going through the parks or whatever other data you want to collect. That could also ultimately be integrated with sensors when we're talking about water levels, or the doors open or are jarred, as I mentioned, you'd be able to monitor other things and integrate that. And how do you do that? We install, there's two scenarios that I'm going to be talking through. One is with a solar surveillance camera that looks almost like a trail cam, and then the other is an actual traditional camera. The traditional camera would be in conjunction with something we call the UIG. The UIG is where all the technology is housed. So the camera would speak to the UIG that has a cellular router in there, and then be able to connect to the Internet and store data in the cloud. One point I want to mention, I'm on what, like 15 minutes?
No, 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 I was just seeing if my, I got a text message. If I had a question.
Little thing.
But go ahead, yeah, so little things.
So one thing I think that's something to take, well, a couple of things to take note of. As I talk about the trail cam, one of the things you might want to think about is, at my house, I know my husband's crazy, has a bunch of cameras. Shouldn't have said that on video, but he has a bunch of cameras outside the house, right? He wants to know what's going on, who's coming up to the house. And on a regular basis, we get these alerts. There's a bee flying by, or a deer's running in front of the house. Okay, great. But then it becomes noise. You don't look at the alerts because you're expected to just be at wild, an animal outside. That's one thing. Another scenario is that with trail cams, they have cards, the same, the cards that are stored within the trail cam, but then what's the benefit of that? You know something happened. Well, something already happened, and now it's going to cost the village a lot of money to fix it. How could we be more proactive and be more responsive? So even if there is a real-time alert, get somebody there fast or catch the vandalism in the act. This is too small to look at, but I'll share with you guys later. It shows all the types of data that can be collected. I think for purposes of, what we want to focus on is really around surveillance. I talked about the two types of scenarios that was pictured. This is just a picture of the trail cam. It's essentially, the difference between this and a trail cam that you would buy off the shelf at, in Walmart, is that you, it doesn't have, this would, this would be able to isolate the people and the vehicles as opposed to everything. It doesn't collect all the data. It only collects what it's programmed to collect, and that's people or vehicles. And then it would also, it has embedded cellular, so it would connect to the cellular network, whatever carrier. We work with multiple carriers, and then it would be stored in the cloud. It sees up to about 100 feet out. It has night vision. In terms of images, it's very typical to what you would expect from some of those hunting cams, if you're familiar with those at all. This is something that I don't know if you can see, that you might want to take a closer look at. I went out yesterday, and I'm glad I did yesterday, not today. It just started to rain when I went out yesterday. We did some analysis of how, how far, like the entire park, this is Memorial Park. And based on this analysis, from a, from the solar camera scenario, there's two recommendations. One recommendation would be to put a pole between the monument and the park, and then another pole between the park and the wellhouse, and then for a total of three cameras. That would be three reconics cameras. And when I say reconics, those are the trail cam cameras. This way, because the camera can see about 100 feet out, it would, it's about 110 feet between the monuments and the park, so it's right smack in the middle. You have one going in one direction towards the monument, one towards the playground. And then in the other scenario, you have another one or two cameras. I think I have to put on the, the proposed page, one camera. But it's, for purposes of this, these cameras come in somewhere in the vicinity of $93 to $100 per month. So if you were looking at two cameras, it would be about $200 a month. And we work on an OpEx model. The recommended is an OpEx model. So you can buy it out front, but ultimately, what the OpEx model provides to the village is the ability to pay monthly over a five-year process. Support and maintenance is with the company. And then after those five years are up, you upgrade to the next iteration of technology. Along the way, our software is updated on a regular basis. So as, if you have needs, or if we have a new customer that has needs for updates to the software, and I can't think of a good example off the top of my head, but some sort of update to the software that would help benefit you. Everybody gets the benefit of the update to that software. The other scenario is the traditional camera with the UIG. So here's a cam, here's a picture of what the UIG is. It's a customized box that is heat resistant, it has the technology, the computer stack, and so the routers are all for cameras. Some scenarios, if you want to go the route of having a microphone on there, we do have the ability to do real-time alerts. Like, hey, we see a car close to get out, you can do that sort of thing as well. This is a much more robust solution. So when we're talking about additional cameras for this, it would average out about $175 to $185 per month per camera. That would include additional views, like full 360 views, and the ability to have video, real-time video streaming, that you can go into the dashboard or the Deep Insights platform, which is our platform, to be able to see the live video or to get those alerts. It does have additional capabilities. This is the platform that would be required if you wanted to have IoT. So the sensors, the different types of sensors for the water levels, with a door or a jar. It also has the ability to, when there are, say, village events, you want to do people counting and understand what traffic flows look like, we could also monitor that from outside, to have if there's a camera that hooks outside. Is everybody with me so far? Am I going to...
How many cameras would you need in this scenario?
In this scenario, I suggested two cameras. In this scenario also, with the reconics, you don't necessarily need a power source. You could, and it would prevent solar. Otherwise, you could just quick install and then move it around when you need to. That's solar-based. This scenario, I noticed that, and it would depend, we'd have to take a look at the power supply, but I noticed that there was like the utility box at the front of the park. So we could put two cameras on a pole there. That would be able, two cameras there, you could have a full 360 view of like the parking lot and everything within the area of Memorial Park. And then one camera over by the wellhouse, because then you'd be able to have a view of the wellhouse as well as the park and the entrance to the parking lot from the other side.
And this would work, I think, if we asked you this question, with the regular camera that is going to be also donated to the village. This system would work with that.
It sounds like that. And also, what I would be able to do is, for...
And we're only looking at one for the incident that happened at Memorial Park.
Right, so...
We are planning, or they're planning to put another monument there. And a pole is always going to be designed to, to be put in one of the berms that are back there, so it's not really noticeable, but it's there. And then one on the wellhouse, and we're seeing maybe one more out by the...
Junction Road.
By the Junction Road.
By the Junction Road, so three, three total there. I mean, you know, the village has a lot of, we have a lot of parks. We have a dog park, we have Ahern, we have Burn Allen, rather, we have Woodfield. We have two water towers, wells, for the water towers, wastewater plant. We have a lot, you know, so it's a big package. I don't know, maybe our municipal lots, you know, any village-owned property, I think we need to. Unfortunately, put cameras down. It's something that we need to really address, especially after the Burn Allen incident. It's going to cost us a lot more money to fix that problem down there. Not to say that it wouldn't have happened if there was a camera there, right? I mean, it's not going to prevent anything from happening, right? So at least we know it, hopefully.
Yeah, the goal being is if...
Deterrent.
A deterrent, well, A, a deterrent, B, more real-time alerts, and understanding that the police department has more important things to do than necessarily respond to every, every alert, because it could be somebody just walking their dog ultimately. But if they do, or if they are able to check an immediate response to stop things in progress.
That would be, not what you said, it would have been a way to deter from...
Yes.
So there's, there's, and also, anybody, maybe it's a general, I don't know if it's a general terminology, it's been in the IT world, a crawl walk run. Maybe that's just terminology in every industry, I don't know. But we're looking at scenarios where, let's get something out to identify, you know, let's test the waters with, you know, one scenario, and then be able to expand and grow, so making sure that the platform works. The benefit of Deep Insights, which is our... The benefit of Deep Insights, which is our platform, is the ability to expand to it. So you're purchasing licenses for each camera stream. Again, it's not a camera company, it's a software company. You're buying the licenses for each camera stream. So just for argument's sake, if you were donated, trail cams that we support, we'd be able to just put the technology on that as well as with the other camera that was going to be.
And you said that there's a five-year window for the cameras. Is the software able to be updated to those cameras over a period of time? Like, you know, like, think of your phone, like, after a while, you can't update it anymore. Like, is it something like that or is it able to update?
Well, the way that the camera would work, it's that, well, the technology that we're talking about isn't at the camera level. So it's not like, just for argument's sake, the cameras that we support require an RTSP, which is Real-Time Streaming Protocol, requires at least 20 images per second.
Okay.
So if you buy a camera, just for argument's sake, 60 RTSP, it's never going to improve. Your quality of image is 60 RTSP. What our technology will do is that, and I'm totally making this up, but, you know, is this, is it, is it an ostrich that ran by? Okay, yes, it was an ostrich that ran by. That could be an iteration down the road. We can't do that, I'm not saying we will be, but just as an example, whatever that updates the technology.
I don't see the ostrich.
In Washingtonville would be interesting, yeah. So there are different scenarios. What I'm, what I'm, what I wanted to do tonight was, you know, based on the conversation I had with the mayor and the chief, was socialize what the capabilities are, how, as a village, we don't have to wait for fiber Internet to be installed for us to dig up trenches in the street and install addition, you know, the expense of that and the time of it. What we could do is quickly deploy something for the safety and security of our community with the trail cams. And then as we're evaluating a larger budget item like the UIG with your additional cameras, it's certainly a path we can go down and I have proposals to share and to be evaluated. And yes, what prompted me to reach out was that I do work for a software company that specializes in this scenario, but I am a community member. So ultimately, if you go in another direction, I would just, I'm here with insight or feedback to let you know what my experience is and what I would suggest, because I've been here 20 years and I want to see the best for the community as well.
You said it stands up well with the heat. What about the cold? Same thing?
Yeah. Yeah, I've never heard anything about the cold scenario, but the heat.
I don't operate that well in the cold.
The, but hardware melts if it gets too hot. The past couple of weeks, that's what you have to be pounding it up. I also did a scenario for the dog, Vern Allen and the dog park. We didn't really talk about the dog park, but when I was out there, I said I might as well take a look at it. What was interesting is that there's also a utility box down at that end. So, based on the scope of Vern Allen, that's, I did all the measurements and the approximation. For the reconics camera, which would be that trail cam scenario, I would suggest that that goes on a pole mounted like between where the first pole is, there's an actual light pole at the end. So between where that is and the bathrooms, because it's like 130 feet between that pole and the bathroom.